Welcome back, the Election Commission and Senators, for being here this morning. What we're going to do this morning is, we left off yesterday on Section 11, 106, but before we do that, we have several amendments that we'd like to go through this morning. The first one is by Senator Respejio on Section 71, 03. Senator, you recognize?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, and good morning to Members of Election Commission, Board, and Staff. Yesterday, we talked about those, as Senator Ruth pointed out, it's possible that you could have an electronic voting machine that as a voter, as individual votes, that machine will count their vote, and then this requires a verified voter paper ballot, and so when the ballot is printed, it's possible that that ballot may be printed and can't put in the machine, and then so, we never want to say what's possible or impossible, but in that scenario, it's possible that those votes might be counted twice. And so, the idea, rather than saying that those votes should only be counted once, which, you know, I felt really goes without saying, I want to offer an amendment that simply puts, "No electronic voting machine that prints paper ballots and also counts votes shall be procured or utilized by the Commission in any election." So, we have one machine to print the ballot, and we'll only have one machine to count those votes. So, I offer this amendment in writing. Copies have been made and distributed.
On the amendment, does everyone have a copy of the amendment?
[inaudible]
Yes. The amendment is to add Item G, Sub-Item G, to Section 71, 03, and the amendment reads, "No electronic voting machine that prints paper ballots and also counts votes shall be procured or utilized by the Commission in any election." On the amendment? Speaker Pangolinen, you recognize?
Can I just ask, then, the Election Commission? I know that you guys, or the Commission, has looked at these electronic voting machines, what it takes to, in order to ensure the integrity of the ballot, of the vote itself, the counting, and the paper trail that was the desire of this body to put into policy. And this, then, changes that, we were trying to move from getting a paper ballot to now saying, and among all those lines, we were assuming that, or at least I was assuming, that one of the advantages of the electronic voting machine was that it can be programmed to ensure that you don't cross your crossover vote, that it allows you to vote quickly and get your vote tabulated as well. So, that now changes this. Is that still something that then gives us the advantage of going to electronic voting machine, or do we just, as Mr. Mesa mentioned, some jurisdictions, election jurisdictions, have looked at doing away with them altogether? Because of some of the issues that have been raised, not only those that have been, of the concern of the author, but also of the great, the implementation that has occurred in the United States on these electronic voting machines have been greater, and the experience there have been greater than what we have here. So, would the recommendation be, rather than just messing around with trying to fix the type of electronic machine we're getting, do you think that, based upon the review of the Commission with enough evidence that have been, and experience that have been gathered over the elections, we should just say, let's just do away with the electronic voting machine, rather than invest money and try to invest resources, just trying to find the right one? That we find that, based upon what has occurred, that maybe there is no right one, and that it doesn't really give us much of an advantage with regards to the election process of going to electronic voting machine?
I know that Mr. Mesa probably has better backgrounds, seeing that he had been on the Commission when the electronic voting machines were used at that point in time. Frankly, I don't think that I will see, at least in my lifetime, the electronic voting machines coming back, but it might be well to put, to have something remain in statute that will allow, because perhaps with the advent, the advance in technology, that they will come out with a foolproof machine, and you would be at least ready at some point in Guam law to allow that. But as far as the machines themselves, many factors need to be taken into account. The explanation to the voters of how it would operate has a tendency to, and has the possibility to confuse, because when I did vote that one time, the machines were used, they actually had to stand there, and I did, in fact, have to ask a question, and I remember that so well. So, those kind of little experiences kind of tell me that I don't think I'll be seeing it, because that was the only time that it was ever used, yeah. But it might be well to have something in statute in the event that the legislature or the Guam Election Commission decides to enter into a purchase agreement for machines. I think one of the biggest problems there was that they had to purchase the machines. They had to, I don't know, perhaps Mr. Mesa, when he has his turn, can say where the funds came from, you know, whether it was a federal grant money, or it was general fund money, but there...
I know that this has been debated among, in the Commission, whether electronic or paper ballot. Personally, I'm in favor of the paper ballot, because you could actually see and mark your ballot, and there is a audit trail on it. I think the electronic, when the Commission first, as I was not there, but as I understand, after the hotly contested presidential election in Florida, where there was a lot of chads, they did away with the punch card system, and everybody went to electronic. But there's been no benchmark as to what is acceptable within the industry. I think there's only probably about two or three companies that are doing that, but a lot of them are finding a lot of problems with it. The problems we had, from what I understand, is they were not sturdy. You move them around, certain chips fall off, this and that. So, I think that is still developing. It'll still be some time before, I think, they really come to a consensus as to what would be the perfect electronic machine. That's why a lot of them are going to paper.
Okay. Thank you. Senator Respejio?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, just to close on my amendment, you know, I certainly agree, and the legislature is not requiring the Guam Election Commission to go and use those electronic voting machines. What we've done following the 2006 general election is we found a lot of discrepancies with respect to the use of those machines, to include the allegation that one of the technical staff from the Election Commission was going around precinct by precinct, unescorted, with the hard drive or something, saying that he was reconfiguring those machines to make sure it works. Now, what we're doing in this exercise is to make sure that, that we want to improve the credibility of our elections and remove any doubt that something as innocently as going to machine, to each machine, and trying to make sure that it works, remove that suspicion that, as he puts that thing inside the machine, that he's actually manipulating the vote totals, and so, so we moved to suspend those machines. And what we've done in a subsequent laws, we require that if the Election Commission's going to move to electronic voting machines, they have to use electronic voting machines and voter-verified paper ballots, since Section 7, 103, and it's VVPB, where the voter goes in, and they make their choices, and then the ballot is printed, and that ballot is actually put into the ballot box, and there's one machine that tabulates all of those votes, that's the tabulator. Now, Commissioner Ruth brought up a good point, that if in the event they come up with a machine that counts those votes, and then also prints the ballots, you don't want to be caught in a situation where someone may inadvertently count those votes twice. And so, I appreciate that concern. So, what I'm doing, based on Senator Ruth's feedback, is I'm offering an amendment that says, "No electronic voting machine that prints paper ballots and also counts votes shall be procured or utilized by the Commission in any election." So, you have one machine to vote on and print the ballot, and then a separate machine to count those votes, and the reason why we're saying procured or utilized, because if in the event they get a federal grant, as in the case of those Ivatronic machines we have now, we have to, we don't, we want to allow them to use it unless it's, unless those machines conform to this standard. So, that's why I offered the amendment. But I, I hope that we always use paper ballots, because, because it's, and you know, Larry Ramirez is outside, and he was very angry with me, because he likes to use those machines, and also Joseph Duennias from Sinehanya, up to this day, every time he sees me, "You're the one who won't make me use the machines." So, people need to understand that there's problems with the use of those machines unless you actually print a ballot out and can, can have an audit trail. So, that's my amendment.
Thank you. On the amendment, no objections, motion carries. The next amendment is, Senator Guthers is not here, is Senator Tom Ada, on Section 91, 25?
Mr. Chairman, I passed around yesterday an amendment to Section 91, 25 regarding leave of absence from employment to vote, and I want to, actually, I don't want to use that amendment. The other, the amendment that I have is, one moment, please. The amendment that I have will actually read differently. Right now, the way that amendment reads is that the employee is entitled, the employee, "Every voter shall be entitled on the day of every election at which he or she is entitled to vote, to absent himself or herself from any service or employment in which he or she is then engaged or employed for two consecutive hours between the time of opening and the time of closing of the polls." Now, my read of that is that I can exercise that at will, that, hey, Mr. Employer, I'm going to go and vote at 10 o'clock today, and I'm entitled to that two hours of pay from 10 to 11, 11 to 12, and then after that, I'm going to take my lunchtime, and then I'll come back at 1 o'clock. I think we need to put a little bit of structure into this, and I would like to make the amendment that, that two hours of paid time off will be applicable only if they do not have sufficient time outside of working hours to vote. And also, employers may require employees to give advance notice that they will need time off for voting. So, let's say an individual, his shift gets off at 4 o'clock, while the poll's still open for another four hours. So, should that individual actually be given two hours off, paid time off, let's say from 2 to 4, to go and vote? As in contrast to the individual who doesn't get off until, let's say, 7 o'clock, then that individual should probably be entitled to get off at 6 o'clock, at least, so that he can have his two consecutive hours, from 6 to 7, and then 7 to 8. And so, the amendment, then, that I will make is on, right there on page 81, on line 5, where it reads, "Between the time of opening and the time of closing of the polls, comma, but only if they do not have sufficient time outside of working hours to vote. Employers may require employees to give advance notice that they will need time off for voting." And then, it continues on to read, "The voter shall not be liable to any penalty or deduction in wages, et cetera, et cetera." And I think that this is in fairness to the employer, in that, you know, he's going to have to basically go with that individual for two hours, and may have to pay him, but at least give that employer some advance notice, so that the employer can also make arrangements to cover for that absence. So, that, Mr. Chairman, is my amendment, and I'll go ahead, and I'll, I'll have copies of this made and passed on.
Thank you, Senator Ada. On the amendment, okay, we'll see it in writing, but before that, we'll have Senator Ruth has a comment.
In the meantime, on this particular section, has nothing to do with your amendment, but if you would note, will note, the, any violation of this provision, that was a Commission addition to that subsection, and we put in that shall be reported to the Department of Labor for enforcement, not knowing whether the Department of Labor does, in fact, you know, have that avenue to fine businesses for such a violation. So, I just want to, would like to alert you that perhaps in, in the labor statutes, that the Department of Labor, in fact, is authorized, or is given authorization to establish a fine for employers who violate this section.
Did you say not knowing that the labor? Or do you know that Department of Labor?
I, I know that they fine...
For other labor...
For other things, but in particular for not allowing or docking their pay, or firing them, because, you know, they insist on going to vote, and, and the employer refuses. And I know that it, it did come up for one employer in the Timooning precinct when, when I was there. There was one precinct person that hadn't shown up, and I felt that somebody should be there. So, I turned, and I saw this businessperson whom I knew, and I said, you know, and I asked, "Is there somebody from your establishment that you can consent to work?" And he declined, only because, you know, he did not want to have to pay. But that is to actually work, but this is talking about to vote, and, and I don't think the Department of Labor has that...
Right.
...in place, so you might want to go in there...
Just AG, the Attorney General.
Yeah.
I think it was to be a civil rights issue...
Yeah.
...possibly a voting rights issue.
And determine where those monies go, if in fact, the employer is fined for not allowing his employees to go vote during working hours.
Thank you, Senator. Commissioner Carrillo, you want to add something as well?
While I agree that it shouldn't be the legislature here that is mandating employers to allow people to leave work to vote, I think it's a federal mandate that employers let them off. So, I'm not, you know, I'm trying to have it checked out, but I'm pretty sure it's a federal mandate that was put in in 2008, the same time that they put in all the other voter regulations to allow more people to vote. I'm not positive of that, so I asked someone to look it up for me, but if it's a federal mandate, it'll, will have to comply with that, because every election we do, there's a federal election taking place every two years. So, that's my concern with that amendment.
Yes, Senator Ada?
But I think, I think what you're posing is, is it a federal mandate that it's got to be given time off between eight, between the working hours? So, if his normal working hours is from 8:00 in the morning to 5:00 in the evening, does he have to give him that time off, or does he just have to make sure that he's given two consecutive hours? In some states, they give him three consecutive hours, somewhere in between that, that voting time period of 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. I believe there's also, I think, in the state of California, where the employer may allow that that time off comes either at the beginning of the shift or at the end of the shift.
Yeah. I agree, Senator Ada. I mean, I read that, I read that California statute, too. I, I just don't want to be, so that our, that our elections aren't in compliance with the federal election standards, because, you know, we do have a congressional delegate at every election, and I want to make sure that, as far as the Election Commission, we're running the proper election, so that our delegate will be recognized when he goes up to Washington, you know? That's my problem.
Thank you. Speaker Ben? Yes, on the amendment?
Thank you very much. You know, I appreciate the issue that's being discussed here with regards to the effect that this statute will have on the operations of the private business, but for me, the more overwhelming concern is, are we presenting any kind of impediment, you know, to the private sector worker? Because the government can always make the decision for itself, but are we presenting a different criteria for the private sector worker with regards to access to time off to go vote? You know, it's kind of like the poll tax, you know? It's like, well, you know, we're requiring a tax on everybody to come to vote, but the only guys that can't come to vote, then, are the guys that don't have money to pay the tax. And the only people that didn't have the money to pay the tax are the majority of the people that didn't have money to pay the tax were the blacks. So, if you take this to its logical, you know, to continue to extend that, are we then, in fact, you know, discriminating against the private sector worker? And the way I read the statute was that it, it didn't mandate, it didn't grant the right of the employee to say, "I want to take it during the middle of the day or during the busiest hour." My reading of that statute was that the employer can decide which two hours to give you, as long as he provides you two hours, so that there is the opportunity for the private company to say, you know, "It's kind of, it's kind of a bad time to send you off at 10, you know, I'm going to do it at 2." And I don't think that that would be in violation of the statute as currently written. So, it provides, in my reading of it, and, you know, we certainly could clarify that, if that's, that would be the direction I would lean. I would have no, no, I would support clarification language that says, you know, at the scheduling of the, of the employer. That's okay with me, because we're still allowing them that same opportunity. But to now say that those guys that, and I know we're kind of looking at this, those guys that are forced to work 8 to 5, now never get any of this two-hour time off, and those that are doing swing shift or so forth, you know, again, I just thought that it would have been, if our intention was to ensure that we don't disrupt the business operations, my propose, my preference would be, and what I'm willing to support, is clarify that it is at the scheduling for, of the employer, at the discretion of the employer, which two hours you can get, and not to retreat a little bit and say, you know, "If you get off at 4, you can't take those two hours during the day." You know, if you get off at 4, there may be other things that, that may come into play, and I know, and I'm just saying that we would then have different set of criteria for when these people can take the two. How do we know that the employers won't reschedule everybody the day before? Or how do we know that Payless and Cowboy Enterprises, in the next election, will schedule everybody, so that it discourages everybody to go to vote against, you know, Eddie? I don't know, but that's, those are the things that I look at, in terms of the effect of the integrity of the election process, that, that people can manipulate. And, and so, I think that language would allow some manipulation to occur, the possibility of manipulation to occur, and the current statute, I think, leaves it so that it still provides the employer with the opportunity to provide that benefit to the employee, our desire to increase and enhance participation in the electoral process, and therefore the democratic process. And I think the way that this is, is done, kind of just complicates it and provides too many permutations of how to handle it, that may result in discouraging people to vote, or giving the opportunity for employers to influence, then, the vote by manipulating the statute. So, that's my concern.
Thank you, Speaker Ben. And just so we're clear, before us is Senator Tom Ada's Amendment Number 2, that has a number 2 on the right, top right. And so, Senator Ada, can we just move to withdraw your first amendment? Please?
Okay. So, I move to withdraw that first amendment that I, the first amendment?
Yes. Okay. No objections. So, now, we're on the second amendment, and so, any other discussion? We have Senator Palacios, and then Senator Yamashita.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With seven, the polls open from, for 12 hours, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Very few employment that actually require 12-hour shift, so perhaps for those kind of employment. But on a 38-hour shift, at any one time, there is, actually, there's time. I think here, my, my focus here is to make sure that voters have sufficient time to vote, to make sure. And this, in my opinion, the other amendment, does not interfere with that opportunity, with that right to vote, because, you know, if you work at 6:00 a.m., you get off at 2, for example, or you work at 8:00, you get off at 5:00, or you get off at 4:00. Now, if it's 7:00 p.m. that the closing, then of course, the 5:00 p.m. securing from work is going to be too tight. So, probably those kind of situation. But in most employment setting, there is at least three hours of opening in any, in any of this arrangement. And of course, there's the option for the employer, so I think, you know, we, we want to make sure, too, that the, there's no unnecessary burden created on the employer for the absence of these people, and to be compensated for the two hours that this person is gone. If that person could accomplish and go and vote after he gets up from work, and to me, the other amendment, it does not, I don't think in any way would deny anyone, or make it very, very hard or impossible for anyone to, to actually vote, if that person really want to vote. And so, that's, I rise in support of that, because I don't see any, any interference on the rights of people to vote by the other amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. Senator Yamashita?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I, I speak in support of a part of Senator Ada's Crawford amendment. I am a real advocate of ensuring that our voting opportunities are as expansive as possible. While I do agree that when the polls are open from 7:00 to 8:00, there is time, there's great amount of time, however, I am very well aware that folks really need to make arrangements to get there. Truly, not everybody has access to the kind of transportation that some of us do, and it's just a real fact. I know many families who really have to manipulate great variables throughout the day to get to wherever they need to get. So, yes, you know, you could say you can go after work, I understand all of that, but at the same time, sometimes folks like to go to the voting polls together. It's, 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 it's a, it's a special time on our island to vote, and it, and on Guam, it just is. It's just a time where everyone has worked hard to get to, they want to go there together, they mingle a little bit, and they do their civic responsibility. So, I don't, the part that I don't agree with is, but only if they do not have sufficient time outside of working hours to vote. I do agree with that employers may, may require employees to give advance notice that they will need time off... will need time off for voting. And for me, that's really quite logical in that I would think that employees already do that. And if they don't, as far as organizational leadership goes, that's what they say, you know, "As a supervisor, I want and I encourage all of you to vote, but I'd like to know who's going to be here to keep the business going." And that employer can then determine if, the balance of the scheduling of it all. So I just think that we need to be as open and as expansive as possible to ensure that our voter rates go up. We have lots of people who are registered, but we don't have, we need more people voting to determine our leadership. So thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Is that an amendment to amendment, or?
Is that how that works? I'm not sure how that works.
Yes, if you.
Okay, so yes, I offer that as an amendment to the amendment to strike the first portion of that amendment from, but only if they have, do not have sufficient time outside of working hours to vote.
Okay. On the amendment to the amendment, Senator Spishu and then Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I was going to offer an amendment, so I guess I'll object to her amendment to amendment. I appreciate the thinking there, and I just asked a sponsor if he's open to saying after hours to vote as determined by the employee. So we leave it to the employee to decide whether or not they need to go vote during working hours because, as the previous speaker pointed out, a lot of people have transportation problems. Larry Ramirez, a former commissioner, is here today, but he just told me that it took him two hours to get from Chalampago to here riding the mass transit system. And so, Mr. Chairman, if employees are going to carpool during work, then that should be encouraged, that they be able to do that. Or what if the employee has a rosary after they get off at 4:00, or their ride is not available after 4:00? So let's go on the side of the employee and make it that the employee determines whether or not they have to vote during work or they can vote after work. And the next sentence covers the sponsor's concern, I think, where they say employers may require employees to give advance notice that they will be needing time off for voting.
Okay, thank you, Senator Spishu.
So we can amend.
Yes, so we'll dispose of hers first. Okay, on the amendment to the amendment, Senator Palacios and then, oh, no, you're okay. Vice Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My concern is, is that this amendment, I mean, the statute as it currently exists has been in existence for some time. And I think that this amendment, and even the amendment to the amendment, and any amendment that's being proposed, is affecting a fairly major right, the right to vote. And I just have real hesitation about doing that in the Committee of the Whole without hearing what some of the problems of people outside are. I mean, you and I may not have problems because we have cars and we drive. But there are other people who aren't as fortunate, and I really don't want to preclude anybody from being able to vote. And so I would prefer if we just allowed, as the commission had done in their presentation to us, allowed the current statute to stand, and if between now and August or September, someone wants to make a standalone bill on that one and have the public come in. I really would hate for us to, it said that we, in the Committee of the Whole, without a public hearing, took away this ability of the voters to go to the polls. And I'm just concerned about that.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Speaker Ben and then Senator Blas.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I certainly echo the sentiment expressed by the retiring speaker, but I would speak also, in addition to that, to the amendment, to the amendment where you tell the employee that he has to go up and tell his boss that you got to, you know, "I have a right." I mean, what's it going to, it just places the employee in an awkward situation. Now, you know, you still have then the opportunity for that employer to kind of like roll his eyes like one of our colleagues in here, as he famously says, you guys were doing yesterday on some issues. What's that employee going to do, you know, when he sees you on Election Day walking up and he thinks, or two days before the election, and you're coming up and he already knows, "Oh, my God, here he goes," you know, and he's going to take two hours tomorrow, you know, and the guy just turns around. He turns around because he doesn't want to put up with it. So I think as the retiring speaker, and I go back to tie to his concern, as the retiring speaker goes, you know, says, then what's that employee going to do? What's the sentiment? What's been the practice? What's been the experience? And we may find out that everything's working okay for, you know, those employers and those employees who want to exercise their civic duty and responsibility to cast a ballot, participate in the democratic process. And you have it in place so that they both know where they're at. We know that the employer's in charge. We don't have to give the employee the burden of asking for those two hours. The employer knows he has to provide it, but he also knows that he has, you know, that he can account for his operations, but his responsibility is that he can't deny those two hours. And I think that that works well. It doesn't present them on uneven, the uneven situation that they're in of employer or employee because they both know what their responsibilities are. But if you're required to go up there and assert that, you may be self-regulating in terms of, "I don't want to deal with having to deal with my employer to ask him to do that," you know? And it discourages it. So that's my concern with what we are trying to do here in the amendments that are being offered, and I stand in opposition.
Thank you, Speaker Ben. Senator Blas, recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I, too, agree with the concern and the sentiment expressed by the good senator from PD. You know, as we're listening, I'm listening to the discussion and also actually doing some research. Quite honestly, I can't find the federal statute that requires the extra hour for the vote. And I tend to agree on the side of, you know, from, based on the research provided by Leo Consol. It says 38 states require, you know, time off. If this was, in fact, a federal statute, I don't think the headline would read 38 states require. So I would like to be able to recognize, we currently have this in statute, yes, okay, so, you know, it's working, there may be some kinks, there may be some ways you can tweak this. I just read, you know, a report where Texas, you know, it goes along the same lines as the, as the gentleman from Manila in as far as proffering the original amendment. But yet there are other states that require in their, in the time off, you know, other things, and take into consideration other factors. We do have to do that. I think the good senator from, again, he brought up, you know, a good point, the good senator from Tumming brings up a good point. So I tend to agree that maybe this is something we leave well, leave it alone right now. Let's look, go back and let's do a little bit more research so that we can see something crafted, we can craft something that can actually fit the concerns then, you know, and the needs to bring more voters here. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Palacios, do you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, there was a time when election days are holidays. And I don't know what was the reason now to reinstate or to remove that and then not declare it a holiday anymore. Imagine the reduction in the opportunity and the convenience on voters when now they have to work and still be expected to vote. Now, you talk about denial of rights. There is a tremendous infringement on the rights to vote when it was a holiday, then it was removed, and it's now longer a holiday. And the other amendment, or rather, the amendment to the amendment to remove a notification to the employer, Mr. Chairman, it is our business to organize this and balance it so that both the right to vote, the opportunity to go and vote, and the obligation, the commitment by private employers to deliver the service that they offer to their customer, to their clientele, should be balanced out. And I say that the current statute, or rather, the, these requirements, the other amendment does not interfere with any of that, any more than removing it from a holiday to now it's not a holiday. And so that's, I want to bring that back to memory, that there was a time when they just don't have to work. And we're talking about the 12,000 government employees. They don't have to work until they get paid and then go to work because it's a holiday. But during that time, the private employers were still able to cope with that, and the private employees still were able to go and vote. And so I want to bring that to memory and, I guess, consideration that what the other amendment is trying to do is only to organize it more so that can be a better balance, both the individual to go and vote and then the commitment on the employers, government employee and private employee, to continue to provide the service that they committed themselves to providing. And for the amendment to the amendment, I too rise in objection to that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. Before we take the vote on that, I know the Commissioner Carrillo and Senator Ruth would like to make a comment.
As many of you know, there's lots of single parents on Guam. I'm one of them. And in order to make ends meet, I work two jobs. Senator Yamashita, I know you're a, you know, you're a single mom. A lot of, I mean, yes, there may be adequate time within 13 hours to make it to the polls. But what challenges are we going to present our voters with if we're not going to allow them to leave during working hours? I mean, I leave it, I leave my house in Manila at 7:00, and I won't get into work till after 8:30 because I need to drop my son off at daycare, and then I pick up one of my coworkers because we carpool, and then I come to work. By the time I get here, it's 8:30. I leave at 5:00, 5:30. I don't get home till 7:30 or 8:00, and my four-year-old's hungry. I got to stop and get him fast food. Traffic is bad on this island. Imagine how much traffic is magnified on an election day. Then you're going to have your child with you if you go after work or if you go before work. I mean, these are things that we need to consider, what kind of roadblocks you're putting up for our voters to vote because primarily that's what our job as a commission is, to protect the person's right to vote and make sure that those elections are run, you know, as efficiently and fairly as possible. So while I, while I agree with the sentiment that we don't want to mandate employers to pay money for something that they don't have to do, it's once every two years, and perhaps you could take out the financial ramifications by saying, you know, you can offer them two hours of leave without pay or whatever. I'm not sure what you want to do, but we don't want to hamper the ability for our voters to vote. And I just know that my day, every day when I have my son, it's impossible for me to do anything else just because my day is just that much more busy. And I just, I'm afraid that I don't want to take away anyone's right to vote. And that was my point. Thank you.
Yes, may I offer to the sponsor of the amendment that you specify between the hours of 8:00 and 5:00 so that even if the person is on a 12-hour shift, obviously, that two-hour window that he is entitled to will kick in for him if he is one of those, or whether it's an emergency position that he holds, or whatever, whatever the position is that that employer or that employee has. The window of opportunity here is only between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. So you might just move that up, kick that up to the first sentence and to clarify that it's just those people who have to work between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. And if you happen to be one of them, you are entitled to two hours. And I think the commission, really besides for, besides the Guam Department of Labor, the commission here did not amend this because it, to us, it's about as clear as you can get that you have two hours. But if you, if you want to expand on it for more clarity, that would be great. And one way might be to specify that for those people who work between 7:00 and 8:00 have two hours. And it could read, "Every voter shall be entitled on the day of every election at which he or she is entitled to vote, to absent himself or herself from any service or employment for two hours between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. when the polls are open, to exercise their right, period." That is about as clear to an employer as I can get it unless you disagree. And I feel like I'm infringing here, but.
Okay. Thank you, Senator Ruth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. On the Senator Yamashita's amendment to the amendment, there was an objection. So all those in favor of the Yamashita amendment to the amendment? Was to delete, "but only if they do not have the sufficient time outside of working hours to vote." That was her amendment to Senator Tom Adda's amendment. Okay, on the amendment, all those in favor? Motion fails. Okay, now we're back on Senator Tom Adda's original amendment.
Where did you just?
Senator Spishu.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, the previous general speaker, the gentleman from Chalampago raised a point that I also wanted to raise, that this problem can be solved if we went back to requiring a holiday on the day of the general election. I believe in the 2006 general election, there was no holiday, and we saw that there, logistically, it was a nightmare for the Guam Election Commission. The buses, they had to have some scheduling. I also know that the largest employer for the government of Guam, the Department of Education, back then they did something that kind of discouraged the voters from going to the polls from the hours of 8:00 to 5:00. And I'm hearing that we want to preserve, which I agree, the right of every voter to go to the poll, but what the add amendment offers, I believe, is some kind of balance to the employer so that within that time period, the employer can make necessary arrangements for scheduling and for, because we would have to do the same thing as a government. We would have to make sure that on the day of the election, all the GovGuam employees have an opportunity to vote. But imagine if all 12,000 GovGuam employees went to vote at the same time. How would that be for the different departments and agencies? So as a compromise, I'm offering after the words "vote," comma, "to include the words as determined by the employee." So that this determination of, that they do not have sufficient time outside of working hours to vote, let the employee by statute decide whether or not they don't have sufficient time because of, they have, because they have to make other arrangements when they get off of work. And then the following sentence will stay, "Employers may require employees to give advance notice that they will need time off for voting." This doesn't at all require the employer to approve that employee's request to go to the polls during the workday, but it at least gives the employer the opportunity to know that from 10:00 to 12:00 a.m., p.m., this employee will be out voting, and they're expected to come back to work. And so I, but if the original language stands, "but only if they do not have sufficient time outside of working hours to vote," to me, that might imply that the employer gets to decide whether or not that employee should take that time off during working hours.
Mr. Chair, just a point of inquiry?
Yep.
With all
Yep.
With all these changes, what should we put, include if this, we go down this road, the statute of who bears the responsibility now to get this information out? Would we do this under PSAs or would it be Guam Election Commission? I mean, I'm just curious while we're going down this road.
Yeah. It would be the commission's responsibility now, once all these changes are made, to make those announcements to the public.
And also, the chairman had an idea that around July, Mr. Chairman, when the candidates have to file, you'll be holding a roundtable meeting with the Guam Election Commission to invite the candidates, and at the same time, it'll be televised so the community and the media will know what these changes are.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that information.
Thank you. So on Senator Spishu's amendment to include "as determined by the employee," is that correct? Right after, "but only if they do not have sufficient time outside of working hours to vote, comma, as determined by the employee." On Senator Spishu's amendment, Senator Pangolinian.
Once again, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to just present again my objection to that amendment. Again, we're, there is already an uneven relationship between the employer and the employee. The employees in the private sector work at will, so they can be dismissed from their employment for anything. And so every time you place a responsibility, you know, with these two unequal, in which the person of the lower authority has to assert himself without the protection of law or protection of organization, then you place him in a precarious situation. And I just think that it really is unfair to the employee to place that burden on him, most especially when we're talking about a basic fundamental right to vote. And I just think that the way that the statute is written gives everything at this time to the employer. He gets to schedule it. The employee doesn't have to determine that. No, what if the employee goes up to the employer and says, "I don't have enough time." Well, what are you doing after 4:00? What are you doing after 4:30? What are you doing after 5:00? What are you doing after 5:30? What are you, no, you don't have to take your kid there first? No, you can go to vote. I don't think you can, that you can't go to vote because, you know, you've got to feed your kid? Or I don't think that taking your mom to the clinic is, you know, no, you can do that at 8:00, after the polls close. You can do that now after you get off work. That kind of thing, you don't think that can happen? It can happen, and I think it's really unfair to place the employee in that position now to answer once again for all the other things that his employer thinks he can do instead of taking time off to go to work at a different time. So I just think that if we are concerned about the employee and we're concerned that he cannot keep his store open, the employer, that he cannot keep his store open or he's not going to be able to deliver the customer service, then let's just say that the employer is allowed to schedule that employee, and we're already then presenting the employee that this is what fits to my operation. And I grant him that he needs to be given that consideration, but don't ask the employee to go up there and argue with his employer of whether or not he has enough time after he gets off to work to go to the polls or not. Because the employer can argue with him and tell him why he, and what's he going to say? Oh, no, I can't really do that, you know, because, yeah, you know, my mom has to eat at 6:00 because she's diabetic, and if I wait, I mean, just those things. I know we think that they're not there. Or transportation, single parents, we all have other obligations that the person that's not in our shoes can think is not as important. The person who's not in our shoe or in that single parent shoe can think, no, I don't think you need, you know, daycare? You just drop them off at the front of the thing. Don't even walk in the door because that takes too much time, you know? And if you dropped them at the sidewalk, then you can go to vote, and I don't have to let you off for two hours. I mean, he's not in his shoes. He doesn't understand. And I'm putting myself in the shoe of the employer according to the statute, and I'm willing to say to the employee, you have to work with me. These are the convenient time for me and for our business, for us, for, to continue to succeed, and you're going to have to put up that this is the hour, but I'm giving it to you. You don't have to come here and justify to me why you needed to do it at this time or that time, or why, you know, you need those two hours and that you can do it in, you know, outside of, after you get work. I just think it's unfair. And as the good senator from Chalampago said, and I voted no when we voted to remove election day as a holiday. I think I was the only senator in this hall who voted no on that. I was the only senator who voted no to remove the holiday for December 8th. Everybody else said, let's remove those holidays.
Point of order, I think you were the only member at that time, if I'm not mistaken.
No, I wasn't. No, I wasn't.
Because I would have voted no with you.
Okay, thank you. But I wasn't the only member at the time. But, no. There was a couple of others in here. I think, I think we all voted to put it back. But again, it is just that issue. I really think that I understand and I appreciate the struggles that business owners have in terms of providing employment for their employees, you know, accommodating the employees' needs. They work with them. And I think, and I'm willing to accept, that we should allow him, you know, in granting this time off, to choose something that would not impact the business as if it was the employee that was asserting it. Give that right to him. Let him know that that's his obligation. He'll live with that obligation every two years. He'll accept it, and we don't have to place the employee in a difficult position of justifying to his employer if his employer shall, you know, not want to and things like that. So again, that is my position on the amendment, and I continue to stand in opposition.
Thank you, Speaker Ben. On the amendment to the amendment, Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I rise and support the amendment to the amendment. The notice requirement, Mr. Chairman, is merely a notice, the advance notice, and nowhere does it require the approval or the employer to be able to say, well, all that is required is advance notice so that that employer can then make adequate arrangement for a substitute to come in and do the work that this employer promised to deliver at that hour and on that day to the customers and to other people that they service. And that's merely what it is. Imagine if you have an employee working, and then all of a sudden, "Mr. Rodriguez, I want to go, I want to go and vote now." Now imagine the chaos. You're going to have to shut down the store, if that a store, retail store attendant or whatever, you're going to have to shut down and close that and suspend the service that you're providing to the people. This is just a mere advance notice for purpose of organization and coordination. And to me, it's a balanced approach. And in no way will it deny a person from delivering the vote. That person, if you really look at it, has 13 hours within which to vote, and probably would take only one hour to actually go to the polling poll, cast a vote, and go back home. And for this, just to provide the advance notice is in no way would interfere with the convenience of that individual. And so...
Point of order, I thought the amendment was as determined by the employee. So it is the, the amendment is that the employee will determine whether he needs the time off or not, not the notice. That's not the amendment. The amendment to the amendment is just, is now to require the employee to determine whether or not he needs the two hours, not the notice part. Not the employer.
Thank you, Senator.
You know, Mr. Chairman, really, what is absent here, in my opinion, and I'm not suggesting an amendment, by, but why not a language that anybody who had taken off during working time, during compensable time, that he present upon return evidence that he had voted from the Election Commission? I mean, is that too much an inconvenience or imposition on the voter to require that? Who are paying you two hours to go? We suspend the service that you're supposed to deliver to the people of Guam. We're going to suspend that service from you and go and vote? I mean, maybe it's time somewhere and say that you had voted during that two hours? We're talking here about basic checks and balance. And I'm not suggesting that, that I think that probably would take care of this, and then it doesn't matter when the employee go to vote, under whatever reason, just present the evidence that you had voted during that two hours that you were being compensated. That's just my comment. I'm not suggesting an amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. On the amendment to the amendment, if there's no one else, Senator, you may close.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, the amendment to the amendment is to provide, include the words "as determined by the employee." Now, if we take the amendment in totality, if my amendment is adopted, look at the last couple sentences, it still provides protections for the voter, where the voter shall not be liable to any penalty nor shall any deduction be made on account of such absence. I mean, this is current statute. What the amendment to the amendment provides is to ensure that the determination of sufficient time outside of working hours to vote is made by the employee and not the employer, and the protection for the employee is this section that says the voter shall not be liable to any penalty. And I think what we're offering here as an amendment to the amendment is to, if without these amendments, Mr. Chairman, you know, the gentleman from Baragada, I appreciate his concern that if an employer doesn't have a good relationship with his employee or vice versa, without the Adda amendment, that employee could be marked AWOL. If they just, if they just take off for two hours, not notice the employer or not let anybody know where he or she is going, and just comes back two hours later and says, oh, I went to vote, then the employer might mark that person AWOL, but even still, there's a protection that that employee would not be liable, so they would still be paid. But it would create a unpleasant situation because the voter didn't notify his employee that that's what he or she was going to do. So I'm offering my amendment to the amendment, just to be clear, of our support for the employee and make the employee make that determination, and it's in line with the desire to provide some kind of balance for the employer so that they can determine how to schedule accordingly. Like I said, with the government of Guam employees, what are we going to do if we just have all of the Gov-Guam employees go to vote at the same time? In this case, even the directors and administrators can have some kind of scheduling, but if a voter is denied the right to avail themselves to the statute, then there'll be consequences to follow. And so I hope our colleagues can see this exercise we're going through as an opportunity to clean up the existing statutes so that it's more clear and it's more fair. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator. On Senator Spishu's amendment to include the words "as determined by the employee," on the amendment, all those in favor? Motion fails. Now we're back on the original amendment. Yes. That was four. Yes. On the Adda amendment, any other discussion? Senator Mabini.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand the intention of the amendment to 912, to Section 912-5 has, is related, at least in my interpretation, to also protecting the employers. But I think, you know, we can get lost in the myriad of various scenarios. You know, we haven't even talked about part-time employees within that seven or eight-hour timeframe, or, you know, what about them? But the bottom line is that this is about access to voting. And as our previous, my previous colleague from PD had mentioned, you know, we, I beg to differ with the, from the amendment and want to stay with the original statute simply because this is about access to voting. It's about protecting the employees, and the onus of responsibility should be on the employee because he is a citizen and he is entitled to that right to vote. So I believe that, that Section 912-5 as is without the amendment is how I believe it should stay. Again, the onus of responsibility is the employee, the citizen, giving him access to the right to vote.
Thank you, Senator Mabini. There's an objection to the amendment. Any other discussion? Senator Barnes?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, as I look at the amendment and understand its intent, my only concern was a concern that I brought up yesterday also, knowing that as we look at this whole reform effort, there are companies right now who feel that their employees should either vote before the voting polls open or after, I mean, when the voting polls office, which is before work or after work. And they've even said that it is not an entitlement to them and that they can refuse that. And that's trying to be negotiated into a contract for that right for that employee to vote, and they feel that they shouldn't be given that opportunity. My personal feeling was, was we really should giving it, we really should look into probably giving the full day off so that we could probably have probably better precinct officials and all that. And I dare to say that today because there is a problem about people being given the opportunity to vote during working times. And I want to say that for the record is because people are not given that opportunity. People in both the government sector and the private sector, and that has come to our attention. I'd be remiss, I'd be fooling you guys if I said, oh, that never happens. But it has happened, it will continue to happen, especially with the scenario bothering up where they're saying you're crucial to the job and you're needed to stay there until we close. So that opportunity for that employee to exercise that civic duty will not be exercised because this is the livelihood, this is their bread and butter, and the employer says, no, 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 think about it. And we may have the provision that says the voter shall not be liable to any penalty nor shall any deduction be made upon the account. Let me tell you, it is happening today, and you guys know it. It has been discussed before. And my take is, is if this amendment is there to protect the advance notice to the employer, who's to say that that employer was saying, even with that advance notice, I'm not giving it to you because your position here is very crucial to the livelihoods and the economic... I'm just, any thoughts on that, Mr. Carrillo?
Senator, I agree. While I agree with Senator Adda's, what his intent, there's no clear standard here, and who's going to determine who has the time? Senator Pangolinian's objection is closer to my thought. There's no clear standard. If we develop a standard to say that, you know, we could, you could come in an hour late for work or you can leave an hour early for work, that might work because then that's clear, it's defined time that you can go and vote. But to just leave it open-ended like it's up to the employee to ask the employer for time off, it's, we want to make, we want the greatest majority of people to vote, registered voters, we want them to have the opportunity to vote. So unless you develop a standard that every employer has to follow, like this right now is a standard in code, it's a standard, two hours you're supposed to have off or you can be fined by the Department of Labor. Are we enforcing it? I don't know. But I do know that if we take away their right to vote, our turnout will be lower. And I just, while I agree with the intent of Senator Adda, I'm just not sure if the amendment is clear enough to protect the rights of the voters. That's my, that's my concern.
Thank you. Senator, you step to the floor.
Yes, I do, thank you. And I want to say that I understand the intent, but I want you to also know that there is a greater picture here, and that right for that employee to take the time off to vote and not be... and not being exercised because there's a big, for them, there's a more critical issue of them making their businesses work for their companies. And let me tell you, this is, this is one of the other reasons why we have problems filling, filling the positions needed to run a more perfect campaign, you might say. But I was even looking at a possibility of having that day literally given to that, to that citizen so that they could be given that full day to make their, to take the time to vote. So, I just state this as a reservation. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Barnes. Any other discussion on Senator Tom Adda's amendment? If not, we'll have Senator Adda close.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, I think a lot of the arguments that have been proffered certainly are very valid. When I offered this amendment, it really was, I was looking at a, you know, a real, real-life situation. Let's say at a bakery, the baker decides that, you know, the bakery, they normally put in the bread at three o'clock in the afternoon so it can be ready at a certain time at the end of the day and make deliveries to the restaurants and, and other businesses that depend on that bread. And if the, if the baker decides that he's going to avail himself of this entitlement, as we put it, to be able to take two hours consecutive time off, and he decides that he's gonna get off from one to three o'clock because he's entitled to that, that in addition to his one-hour lunchtime, then the impact of, at least the way the, that section is written right now is that, at least the way I read it, is that that individual is entitled to absent himself, and in my perception, basically, that's it. I'm gonna check out at one o'clock, I'm gonna go vote, and then I'll be back. So, the impact of that in the community is really a lot more than, you know, and now, the amendment that I made does not in any way diminish the rights of the individual to go and vote, nor diminish the protections that the existing statute provide. But I think also, on the other hand, so, so we're not taking anything away from the employee. The amendment that requires, that allows for the employer to, that he may require an advance notice, that, that part of the amendment doesn't even say anything about the employee having to ask to get off. It's just simply the courtesy of, you know, "Mr. Employer, I wanna get off tomorrow at one o'clock," and the employer may at that time help to clarify why it really would be very difficult if he was to get off then, but otherwise, he's still gonna have to give him that time off. So, I guess I was just trying to put some structure in this so that, you know, it's not a free-for-all. There was some descrip, you know, there were some discussions made about how an employer may, you know, do the interrogation about, "Well, why do you have to take your, you know, you don't have to do this at four o'clock, you don't need to go and fi-" Well, quite frankly, if that kind of a situation exists between an employee and employer, I think that employee better start go looking for another job, 'cause that employer's certainly not worth working for. But be that as it may, I guess everybody's gonna need to take a position on, on the amendment that was made, and then we'll, then we'll move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Adda. On Senator Tom Adda's amendment, all those in favor? (laugh) Motion, motion fails. I'm sorry. Oops, sorry. Thank you. We have another amendment, Senator Palacios. Are you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, what I offer here is just, I guess, the standard, basic, common sense, I guess, checks and balance and accountability. And I wanna add, my amendment is to add, of course, after the, on the last paragraph at the end of that sentence on the, on 9125, "A voter who absent himself or herself from employment for the purpose of voting shall provide to his or her employer evidence from," this is not for, "from GEC, Guam Election Commission, that he or she had voted during the hours of his absence." And that's it. I mean, you know, you, you go and you ask to vote, maybe as a simple, I don't suggest you stamp the hand, but as simple as perhaps that, that a form can then say here, just presented to the employer, at the minimum, because we're talking here about no advance notice and no so fine, but at least, you know, I mean, I care too that you actually go and vote. And that's, that's actually my amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. On Senator Palacios' amendment, Speaker Ben and Senator Munia Barnes.
You know, I object to the amendment, Mr. Chair. I think that, once again, we're, I, I just can't fathom this, you know, matter, I think, in this fashion. Every other community is placing and searching for ways to encourage voting, and, once again, I just think that, you know, this is an unnecessary impediment, I think, to that exercise. I already know, of course, that they will disagree with my position. But again, it's any kind of barrier, for me, voting is so fundamental that any kind of barrier perceived, real, that you place that may impede a voter from exercising that right, I think is not in the best interest of democracy and the election process. And I believe something like this, if you go back, I mean, we justified all sorts of things that prevented people from voting and disenfranchised people. Some were overt, some were subvert in terms of what its impact would be, or at least the public representation that, "Oh, no, this doesn't really affect that." And I believe that this will be the subversive way of impacting an individual from exercising his right to vote. That may not be obvious to the public because from a general perspective, you say, "It makes sense." But again, it's that the individual circumstance that the voter is in, the relationship that the voter has with him, I mean, he comes back next day and he doesn't have that vote stamp because it washed off, or sticker, or he left without getting something, the guy's an at-will employee and he gets fired. That employer can say, "Ha, you liar, you know, you didn't go to vote, you didn't present to me." "Well, I forgot, I didn't get the sticker, they didn't stamp my hand," you know? And he is an at-will employee that can be fired for any cause. That's the kind of situation that I think, you know, we have to place ourselves in with these employees. Some of us are very fortunate, we don't know what it's like to work as an at-will employee because we've always had the protection of civil service and, and, you know, and so forth. But, but some of us have, and it is not, you know, in some employee, employer relationships and, and working environment are so much better in some private companies than they are in the government of Guam, even with merit protection. But that's not the standard. That's, you know, there are other situations which we then place that employee who's not in that ideal situation, who's not in that conducive environment, who's not in that supportive environment, and you place that individual then in a precarious situation. And that really is my only, my concern with it, so. And I'll re-echo what the good senator from PD says. If we're going to require this, then I really think we gotta know what the public feels like. We already know what the employers feel like, but we now need to know what the general public feels like, what the general voter feels like on something like this. So, I stand in opposition to this amendment, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Sisios Massey.
Thank you, Senator Pangolinian. Senator Barnes?
Sisios Massey, Mr. Chair. I do have some reservations, Mr. Chair, in as far as this amendment as stated because, first of all, the resources of just trying to find the proof of how, there's nothing that we do today that gives an individual an accounting of when they voted or not. Now, if we had the electronic voting and there was a receipt, then that could probably be approved, but then we would have to spend more money to, to, to give them some kind of form of documentation that they went to vote. So, I do have my reservations on this, so, though I appreciate the intent, it, I think it's not financially feasible at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Barnes. On Senator Palacios' amendment, any other discussion? Senator Guthriez and Senator Tom Adda.
You know, I understand what Senator Palacios is trying to do, he's trying to create some reassurance to the employer that, you know, the time was spent appropriately, executed in accordance with the intent of the law. The only problem I see is the logistics of giving out excuse slips at every election precinct, that we would have to have people sit there and fill in the excuse slip and then stamp it. So, I think that part has to be considered, but I understand the intent, especially now that this other amendment passed, that an employee can just leave and vote.
Thank you, Senator Guthriez. Senator Tom Adda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to proffer an amendment to the amendment, and that is so that the amendment reads, "A voter who unilaterally absents himself or herself from the employment for the purpose of voting shall provide the evidence." And, and again, I think this here then goes hand in hand with that part of the provision which says that the, "Every voter shall be entitled to absent himself or herself." And again, when I read that, I read it that, "That's it, you know, all I have to do is, I have to make that decision myself, and I really don't need to tell anyone, I'm just gonna go, and if I get, if anybody questions where I went, I went to vote, and I'm entitled to consecutive hours." But, you know, if, so if the, if the individual unilaterally just ups and leaves, then I think the employer should at least be entitled to that also. Although, I, you know, I think it's, I think it's really kinda sad if in the organization that sort of relationship exists where the employer cannot depend on his employee and the employee is so irresponsible, I think that's really a sad situation, and there's something more fundamental there than, 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 you know, just, just this two hours that we're talking about. So, I would like to, that's, that's the amendment to the amendment I would like to make, and that, it would read then, "A voter who unilaterally absents himself." So, in other words, the employer doesn't even know that he took off. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Adda. On the amendment to the amendment, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, okay, so no, okay, so motion carries. On the original amendment, Senator Palacios' amendment, any other discussion? There's none, now Senator, you can close.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this amendment is just very simple, very elementary principle of accountability, very simple, very elementary, I guess, process of policy that would not diminish the ability of any voter. If you're just gonna pick up from where you're working, government or private, and say, "I'm gonna vote, I'm entitled to vote," now, fine, but the individual, the employer has to have evidence that this individual voted, and I think the evidence here that, that, that I propose, it could be, it could be designed by the employer and say, "Well, here's the slip, maybe Palacios went to vote on this day at this hour, bring this back to me with the Election Commission stamping showing the date and time." In other words, it's not gonna cost the government anything. The employer will give this person, "Return this slip back to me when you go there." And that, that's what it is all about. And so, again, you know, very elementary policy, very elementary. I mean, a student in elementary school can understand this, it checks and balance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. There is an objection to the amendment? All those in favor of the Palacios' amendment?
Can we call for the House?
Okay. Sergeant in arms, can we? We'll take a short recess while we do that. The committee of the halls now back in order. Yes, Senator Palacios, you wanna put this aside, and we'll come back to it? Okay, we're putting this amendment... Yes. Senator Palacios, you recognize?
I suggest, and the reason why is that a colleague who's not here had actually joined me with that. So, I don't want to deny him the opportunity to subdue, to vote on the amendment. He's not here.
Okay, thank you. Before we do, before we recognize Senator Guthers, I'm sorry, Senator, we'll have Senator Barnes just make a clarification from, from a concern that was brought up yesterday.
Point of information, Mr. Chair, if I may. Based on yesterday's discussion on, on public law, 24-273 and it not being codified into law, and as far as the time for when the polling place is open, Bill, Bill Number, Bill Number 713 LS, as introduced by Senator Casper Bowers Salas and Cruz, E.J. Cruz, was introduced, it was passed in the 24th Guam Legislature. It's 24-273, and I just received word from your executive director that the compile of laws has not included it in, but that it has been codified. So, the reference bill is Bill 713 LS in the 24th Guam Legislature. It was in 1998, and it was now public law, 24-273, which has been codified. So, if, I guess what we need to do in that section, unless there's an amendment to keep it at eight, is that it should be 7:00 a.m. The polls will open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 8:00 p.m. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Senator, for that point of information. And yes, the executive director did make contact with the compative laws, and that is the case. So, I think what we can do is have legal counsel just make that, that correction. Thank you, Senator Barnes. Senator Guthers, you recognize on your amendment on Section 7116?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We spoke about this yesterday, and I have an amendment to Section 7116. I also have a small addition to my amendment at the end of the amendment. So, the amendment would read for, number four, "That no private security worker hired by a candidate or candidates shall be within 1,000 feet of a ballot box that is being stored at commission offices and/or at election precincts." So, "and/or at election precincts" would be added at the end of the second line, following "commission offices and/or at election precincts." The reason for the amendment, Mr. Chairman, of course, we all know that many people had concerns with respect to developments in the last election with private security folks sort of guarding the door where, where ballots were being stored by the Election Commission, and people found that to be very peculiar and inappropriate. And if anyone's going to be guarding ballots, it really should be police officers assisting the commission and not private security officers hired by candidates. So, that is the purpose of offering this amendment. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Guthers. Senator Tomada, you recognize?
I, I agree with what the, the mover of the amendment is trying to accomplish. However, I think, I think maybe we need to amend the amendment because the candidate himself may not be the one who hired that security worker, but it may be a, a company, a security company which has close business ties with that candidate is really what we're trying to exclude. So, the amendment that I would like to make to the amendment is that it should read, "No private security company with close business, a social, a relationship to a candidate or candidates shall be hired to provide security services," or, but something to that effect. I guess we would need to sit down and wordsmith that, but, but it's not necessarily, you know, if I owned a security company, I may not be the one to say, "Hire them." So, so I think we would need to maybe address this after, after the recess and wordsmith it. If the, well, if the Election Commission hires the security company, but it, but, but that company has a business relationship with any candidate, then should be precluded.
Okay, so you wanna move this, set us aside as well?
Yeah. The question is, people cannot do rights to that, if you were right, then you're having trouble. I hear you.
Okay, so we'll set this aside, and we'll come back to it. So, we're now, proceed to Section 11106.
To Senator Palacios, right?
No.
Oh, yeah?
This is where we left off yesterday?
Say the number again, please.
Section 11106. Rejected ballots. Speaker Wampat, you recognize?
I just want to, thank you very much. Just want to refresh our memories on this discussion yesterday because we were debating, and I know that an amendment had passed, where in line, well, where it says that "And the precinct leader and all members shall write and attest." And then later on, it was disclosed that there's a different section in the bill itself that speaks to this section, hence basically saying that we would not meet, so the recommendation of the commission then, commission members, is that Section 11106 then is not needed. But I think for the benefit of our members yesterday who weren't all here, is that if you can again direct us back to that specific session, a section that was disclosed to, you know, the body yesterday, and that was Senator Ruth, I think you're the one that... Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Speaker Wampat. And yes, there was some recommendations from the commission. Mr. Mesa or Senator Ruth?
Rejected ballots can be found in Chapter 10, Subsection 10120. And just to point out that in, in Chapter 11 regarding defective ballots, defective ballots are those ballots that occur at election central during time of counting where the, the machine rejects it because it is defective, because they might be torn or folded. That would be 10120, Chapter 10. Yes, Chapter 10. Keeping in mind too that, that rejected ballots in, in Chapter 10 is directly addressing those absent, absentee voter ballots that come through to us in an envelope with an affidavit on it, on the envelope.
And is it, is it, the rejection is based on documentation prior to being certified as a ballot? So, it's not the ballot itself that is rejected, it's the acceptance of the ballot?
It's, yes, yes.
Whether they have the affidavits, whether the envelope is folded?
That's correct.
So, it's not really the ballot that's being rejected, it's the acceptance of the ballot that's being accepted. So, I guess in that, in that effect, we just wanna make, you know, determine that the criteria for the rejection of the ballot is not that it's improperly marked, or overvote or undervote of the ballot itself, but...
But that the, but that the voter is technically rejected.
That's right. So, we're rejecting the voter's right to vote, not his, not the vote itself, but in the end, the vote itself doesn't become, come into play at all.
Yes, and it is when that affidavit, when that ballot envelope returns to the commission, it is, you know, they, they determine just exactly what went wrong, and the statute, existing statute allows for that voter to come back in and correct whatever wrong he may have had in filling out the affidavit.
Okay.
So that it can be corrected, and if everything, if that is done and everything is in order, then the ballot can be counted.
Right. So, so once again, the, the process is that ballot from the precinct where it was rejected goes to the resolution ballot pile, and then the Election Commission makes the final decision of whether or not to include that ballot in the count. Is that correct? It is the commission that makes the final decision after reviewing the packet from the precinct official.
From the precinct, yes, sir.
That, then they make the final decision whether or not that ballot should be accepted and be counted.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
So then, on that section where it says rejected ballots, and I now see the connection here, but the language that goes on further says that said envelope shall be signed by the members, which is what we're discussing yesterday, of the precinct board. So, then I guess it's every member.
Yes.
And then, "And to be returned to the commission at the election return center after the polls close." But that now is a little bit different from what the previous speaker is saying, that where then it would be resolved, to be resolved by the commission.
All the absentee ballots would come into the Election Commission because all these people are, have applied and got a ballot, and so now they're returning their absentee ballots. So, the instructions are very specific, even at the time of their voting, whether they're in Afghanistan or in New York, the, the rules are very specific. That envelope is, or that ballot is placed in a, in the ballot envelope, and then that ballot envelope is placed in an outer envelope, and on that outer envelope is the affidavit, and that eventually comes back to the Election Commission. If that, if that envelope, or when that envelope is there and received on election day, that envelope is transmitted to the precinct with all the other ballots and all the supplies and boxes, et cetera. And it is the responsibility of the precinct of, board at some point during 7:00 a.m. or, and 5:00 p.m. Hopefully, they would do it before the polls open at 7:00, but that's practically impossible to expect them to account for every piece of paper and pencil and, and open all these absentee ballot envelopes. But they're, they're supposed to open and make the, the verification between the affidavit and what's on the, on the voting roster. When that envelope is received at the Election Commission before the, before election day, the commission staff is not authorized to touch it. It is just put into safekeeping, and on election day, it is transmitted to the precinct, and the precinct board is the one in charge of making sure that he filled it out correctly and everything. And when they see that there's something missing, that's when they reject it, and that's when they have to sign it, and they all have to agree that we rejected it because he didn't put his birthdate down, and we have no idea whether he's eligible to vote.
But, but I think the concern here is that it, do we want that to be decided at the precinct level by the five members?
Yes.
Or that it should be really decided by the commission members? And see, and I know I was reading further on here, and a lot of it really, a lot of the responsibility is placed with the precinct. And I think all of this really, whatever the disposition is of any of these... And I think all of this really, whatever the disposition is of any of these concerns, you know, rejected ballots, some information is missing, or whatever it is, any discrepancies, that it really should be decided by the commission members. Because you're, you're elected, I mean, appointed by, of course, your party, and then as well, you know, assigned. And therefore, it should not just be a precinct officials who are there only for that one day.
As it is, it's already unwieldy for the precinct board to have to do this. Badabli unwieldy for the commission members to do it.
Then, okay.
So we can either do it, if you will allow us to do it, it would be up to you to allow us to open all absentee envelopes before election day, or open them as we, as we receive them, which is highly unlikely.
I mean, the, the process of having it open, I think, at the precinct is not a problem at all. I mean, that, that's fine.
That's correct.
It's the disposition of, you know, those ballots. Do you want somebody there just for 13, 15 hours versus whether, so I can understand maybe not the commission board members, because you're not there on a daily basis, but the election commission staff to, to review and then to be ratified by the commission members?
It will require certainly additional people. You know, it just --
Can, can you give us an idea how many of these ballots we're, we're talking about that are, that have been rejected in the past?
Perhaps the executive director can produce the statistical analyses, the, the report that was transmitted, I believe, to the legislature.
Well, maybe Mr. Mesa can tell us at least his experience at the time when he's in, because I know Maria hasn't been there through, through one election at all yet.
Yeah.
So maybe Mr. Mesa can share some of the information in terms of ballots that have been rejected, absentee ballots that have been rejected, and even just other ballots rejected during the election day.
Do you have yours? Okay, I think we need to divide it. Because it's the absentee envelope that would be rejected if it doesn't meet certain, for example, wasn't notarized or devoted and signed. Then that affidavit envelope that has the ballots is, is not cast, okay? And no time do they touch the ballots at all. In fact, the precinct officials, the only thing that they do with respect to an official ballot is that if a voter makes a mistake and they want another one, they put an X and they put it in an envelope. Or at the end of the day, they take all the unused and they put another X and they put it in the unused envelope. That's the only time they would touch the ballot. This particular section that we're looking at, as I said yesterday, has been in existence since the 11th Guam Legislature. And I, I believe this was, because at that time, a lot of the counting was done at the precinct. As in, then the precinct officials would note why they would not count them, okay? That's why I say, I really don't think you need this.
And, and, and you know, you're right. It's been since the 11th, you know, Guam Legislature. But, you know, we learn from, you know, experience, and that's why we are, where we are today is that we need then to update, you know, many of these, you know, rules and regulations. And at the same time, based, of course, on past experiences and mistakes made, that now we're here again to try to make sure that there will be no repeat, you know, of those, so some of these things won't fall through the cracks. And, and more importantly is how then do, you know, we avoid, you know, any problems in the future by defining very specifically, you know, what's going to happen, who's going to be responsible. But I think by the, the most part is that ultimately, I feel that, and that's me, of course, and I don't know how anybody else feels about this, but the, I can understand decisions being made at, at the level of the precinct members and the precinct leader, but there has to be some ratification of their actions that, you know, whether they would, like you said, we wanted everyone to sign off so everybody would all agree, or else there'll be some that may disagree, and we need to take into consideration especially those that are disagreeing and, and hear why, or, you know, read why. But then, when that happens, and it goes then before the commission members, that you need to ratify that decision. Or you're just then blanketly saying, "I accept their decision," not knowing what, you know, may have happened at the precinct level.
No, I believe that the commission has the final authority on anything. Again, the only time the precinct officials would come to a vote is during a challenge, okay? If somebody challenges a voter, then they take a vote whether to uphold the challenge or not. Yet, the voter still has that right to appeal to the commission on election day, and, and there's also a judge on election day. But the precinct official doesn't have the authority to reject a ballot, anybody's ballot.
Yes, that's exactly what I was trying to say.
Right.
So they're going to write on the envelope reasons, like it says here, state giving reason, you know, therefore what, you know, it is, therefore this is why we're rejecting it. Yes, that's, that's exactly what I'm trying to say, but, like you said, ultimately, but do you do it formally, that, you know, that you are ratifying, you know, all of these actions taken by the, and it's not going to be everybody, of course.
Right.
Sure, not every precinct. But those that are, that you give it due consideration, that you really do look at it and you see what the reasons are, and then you ratify it. Because, I mean, who's going to ultimately make that final decision if there is a question by one or more member who, you know, have signed off, not agreeing with the rejection? Who ultimately resolves that then?
Well, I, I think there needs to be a vote of the five members. And if they all vote in affirmative, then they all agree. If there is, if there is dissension, then that could be appealed to the board on election day.
So it's just not automatically, it doesn't automatically stand as a, the next level it goes up to you, because there's not a consensus? It wasn't unanimously signed off?
In the case of a challenge, it usually is sent back, uh...
No, but I mean, but let's say it's not even a challenge, it's just, you know, the five of us are in the precinct.
But there wouldn't be any other reason why they would deny a vote, Speaker.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I mean, is, is there, you know, there would be differences of opinion in terms of what would they consider? I mean, an affidavit is an affidavit, granted, they're not going to, to, to vote, you know, against that, because that's a definite requirement.
And usually, procedure-wise, the, the absentee, before they go out, is screened by the commission. Now, if there is a defect and it doesn't go out, we know that, it's noted down as to why it was not sent out. Did I confuse you?
No, I'm just saying it still doesn't resolve any dissension.
Hmm.
How, how do you deal when there is a dissension? And you could very well support, come right out and support exactly what the majority has said, you know, to the one dissenter, or two, because it won't be a majority. How then, how, how can, let's, I'll put myself in that position, let's say, I'm one of those that, you know, I signed off saying that I do not agree with the rejection. How do I know that what I said would actually be seen by, as, not to personally say I'm going to appeal this by doing this, that then when it ultimately comes back to, you know, the, the commission, that there would have been, I mean, not necessarily that very day, it could be the next day, because we know that you're, you're not going to certify the, the votes until, you know, all the requirements are met. But to later say then that we have reviewed this, we looked at it, and every one of us in the commission feel that, you know, there are, it's not justifiable, then, you know, it's, we move forward, you know, with it. That's all I'm saying, is that how do you resolve, you know, any dissension?
I, I guess maybe where I'm having the difficulty is, the precinct officials cannot reject. The only time they can deny a person the right to vote, if there's a challenge and they vote to uphold that challenge, on that same day, at that same time, they can appeal. The voter or the person who raised the challenge, either party, can appeal directly to the commission. The commission meets that day, and in fact, it schedules to meet various times throughout the day in the event there's a challenge. Usually those come up during a mayoral election, okay? And if, if either party is not satisfied with the commission's decision, there is a judge that is on standby on election day to resolve that.
Okay, so that's what you're telling me. So now where is that then in the section here, where it says exactly what you just described to me?
Okay, it's, it's titled as Challenges, it's, uh, let me see. Give us a couple seconds. Okay, if you look at Section 9119, actually under the current.
May I, also 11106, that, there's another, says rejected ballot, "All members of the precinct board shall endorse upon all ballots rejected and shall write," that's page 109 on the Digest, Section 11106.
9.
Page 75.
911, Section 911.
I, I think, I think, Mr. Chairman, that, um, that rejected ballots in one section or one chapter are not necessarily the same in meaning with the rejected ballots in another chapter. So you need to have a reading, you know? Oh my goodness.
Actually, it's on Section 9118, beginning at 9118, under the current one. I think that's page 75.
Yes, the 1, 9118 will be the grounds for the challenge.
Right.
And then, but 91119 is that, it says the precinct board shall examine this.
Right.
And, but you told me earlier, it was the commission, either commissioner will go down, or a judge will go down to resolve it. That's the, that's the part I'm trying to find where it says just that, that it's not only the precinct board.
In the second paragraph, Speaker? Line 24?
Okay, so, in, in, initially, then it says that the precinct board then will examine it, will give the voter... Okay, I see, notes, 22. "But in no event shall such time be granted so as to prevent the precinct board from rendering a decision prior to the time," no, no, that's not it then? So once then the voter then, or whoever the challenger is, then actually starts to question or appeal it, then the precinct officials then will call for commissioner to come down. And then the commissioner then, so either the voter or the challenger may appeal the decision of the commissioner to the Superior Court, that's beyond that then. Okay, so then, so then this brings us then back to, now, and I want this clarified, because I just overheard Senator Ruth say something to the chairman, that some of the challenges, or the rejected ballots, whichever, are different for, for, for different sections. And so then, so this question about the commissioner then will be the same throughout, or different, again, for different situations?
No, it would be the same, in, in relation to what Mr. Mesa was talking about, it is the same throughout the election. But in Chapter 10, where it's talking about rejected ballots, they are, that, that chapter is for absent voting. Those ballots that are coming in from somewhere because the person applied for an absentee ballot.
So how then would that differ from Chapter 11, where you were recommending that maybe the, we would not need that Section 11106, because it's already reflected in 10120?
Well, in, in 111, I'm sorry, in...
11106.
And the question is, on 11106 is, I'm sorry?
Because we had so much discussion on it, and it was amended. And then later on, at the end of the day, you had suggested that we would not need now 11106 because, on rejected ballots, because that also appears on 10120. So does that now hold true or not because of another statement you made, that it could be different for a different chapter? So since these are two separate chapters, 10 and 11, would it be necessary to have both of them there now, or just one in Chapter 10?
For clarity, I would, I would have them in both chapters, I think.
Okay, so, all right, so, so then that was the question, that's why we, we recessed at 11106.
Because even in the rejected ballots that you were referring to, in, in the case of that chapter, the word "rejected" really is kind of a misnomer, because, because it is in fact defective, because we're, you're basing the decision, or basing the rejection on the fact that his affidavit is not completely filled. So, so it's defective because it's missing his date of birth. But it does not reject the ballot that it contain, that's contained therein. So if, if the legislature wishes to clarify that even further, we, we can certainly, we will have to abide by it. But, but because we have gone through this, you know, in the last, in, in recent elections, it's become the norm to view them as rejected or defective, but yet, just making very sure that, that they're treated appropriately.
So the language then, so this is what we're trying to do now, is fix 11106, using, not... Not... not everything, of course, in 10120. It says that they're, they're both worded differently, but yet they're almost saying the same thing, whether that, the language, which is much more detail in 10120, whether that almost same language can be used in 11106, describing the process. Because what I like about that with 10120, is that it, it says that the ballot that's rejected, they would give the reason, which is the same thing that 06 is saying, but what it also says here is that, set, that when you put it, when you seal the envelope, or it shall be signed then by the members of the precinct board, which is also here, and then returned to the commission at the election return center after the polls close. So is that the same thing here for this rejected ballot in chapter 11?
I don't think so.
It does not go to the commission?
101, 10120 is specific to absent voting, absent voters. And in 11106, which you referred to, is the votes, the, the people there who come that day.
You're right, but that doesn't go anywhere? That does not go then to the, the election return center? Where does it go?
Yes, it comes to the election return center. Everything, every piece of, of ballot is accounted for, and that's why the, the audit at the end of the day, at the closing of the polls is very critical. And, and, and just as critical as in the beginning, when the documents are delivered to the precinct. Their first job is to acknowledge that they did in fact get 100 pieces of ballot, like the commission claims it sent them. And everything has to be counted, and, and enter the, the idea about 7 o'clock being, you know, very, very early. They need at least two hours, or at the minimum, one hour, to do that work. But the bus arrives there, and they're expected to, you know, open shop and accept, and, and no time for counting, or, there is time for counting, because they make the time for counting. But in the meantime, the line might be building up, there are perhaps one, anywhere between one and 10 people already voting, or standing in line to, to check in, but yet they cannot, because they need to, to acknowledge the account. And at, at the close of the poll at the university, or wherever that would be, they have to do it all over again. So every, every rejected, every defective, every cast ballot is accounted for, and they all have different stacks.
Speaker, can I suggest that we recess, and then we work with the commission to make any amendments, and then come back at 2:00 PM today?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll recess till 2:00 PM.